May 7, 2018, regular city council meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, if you're name standing, I'd like to ask Pastor Harris, who's from your pastor church, to come give us a prayer.
Let us pray. He have showed thee, oh God, oh man, what is good? And what do the Lord require of thee? But to do good, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with the God. Gracious God our Father, we come right now praising you for this day. Truly you have blessed us with a beautiful day, and we give praises unto you. But Lord God, we pray that this community, Inkster, may become one. We pray, oh God, for unison. We pray that we can come to, come together and handle our business with the trash. Decisions have to be made. And I pray, oh God, through your wisdom and guidance, that we will make the right decision. Father God, I pray that your hand will continually be on Inkster. I pray that the officials that you've left to govern our daily affairs and our business, that you would direct them and lead them to make decisions with the community in their heart. And so, Father God, we know that we cannot do nothing without you, so we pray that your wife, Watch For I, will continue to be over this city, care for this city, bring us together, oh God, because ultimately, Lord, we want to be a city that shine. So, Lord, just bless us now, as we discuss old and new business and lead us according to thy will, that you may receive all glory, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Before we get into, way into the meeting, we... Roll call. Roll call, go, go, go.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yeah.
Mayor Paul Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilwoman Chesaw.
Present.
We have seven present, and we do have a four.
Okay, thank you. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? We're gonna add one more presentation under Presentations, introduction of a new police officer. Okay. Add that, we'll do that one...
We take one of it, one off, right?
One off, yeah.
Yeah. And then we're gonna take N off, under Agenda Items. N, okay? And we got two closed session votes we need to add. What items are they gonna be?
Um, P and Q.
P and Q, but we took off N, so...
That's fine, that's fine.
So, P and Q, what we talked about in closed session. P and Q, I don't think we ever got to P and Q.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
Okay, um, we have motion to approve the agenda?
I'm a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. We'll move on to Presentations. We have a proclamation for Carol Woods. You have family of Mr. Woods here today?
Yes.
Honey, you could've come down and be part of this. We have three proclamations. Should we read them all, or...
Oh, no.
Well, the important people, we'll let the important people read. But we have a proclamation for Carol Woods. We know what he makes of the community. He was definitely involved, volunteered his time, his money, to help us keep our community clean for years. And we appreciate him and want to acknowledge him for his support of our community. We also, Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson has a resolution for him. State Senator David Mead has another resolution, State Representative, sorry, State Senator. State Representative Joel Jones. You're talking about, you're the big cheese, you read yours.
Let it be known that on behalf of the citizens of Michigan, we extend our condolences and respect to the family and friends of Mr. Carol Woods Jr., whose passing has saddened many. He was dedicated to the interests of the community, and during his lifetime of civic involvement, Mr. Woods strived to make Inkster a wonderful and welcoming place to live and work. Carrying husband, father, uncle, entrepreneur, friend, and dedicated community member, Mr. Woods enriched countless lives and will be genuinely missed. Born in Wilsonville, Alabama, Mr. Woods grew to be a modern Renaissance man. He became infamous for his stylish dress, loved westerns, ferociously read books, could dominate a chessboard or billiards table, and loved jazz and classical music. He married the love of his life, Sarah, in 1953, and together they welcomed two sons to the world. Mr. Woods was also a respected and profitable businessman. He built his Woodlove Construction Incorporated into one of the largest minority-owned businesses in the Detroit area. His unique expertise led him to become the first black president of the Associated Underground Contractors of Michigan, as well as a consultant to numerous local firms and municipalities, including the Detroit Water and Sewer Department. Distincted and hard-working servant displayed a total commitment to his fellow man. He was a member of the LaSonia Park Block Association, Inkster Citizen Action Network, Inkster Water Commission, and an advocate at Inkster City Council meetings. He also regularly partnered with the city to organize cleanup events and made it his mission to hire and mentor local youth. The passing of Mr. Woods has left an unfulfillable void. As a community leader, he was much admired and will be long remembered. In special tributes, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to offer these words of praise as a memorial for Mr. Carol Woods Jr. May his family and the entire Inkster community know of our esteem and our deepest sympathy for their loss. Signed by State Representative Jewel Jones, myself, Lieutenant Governor of the State of Michigan, Brian Kelly, and the Governor of the State of Michigan, Rick Snyder.
I don't know how many you can hold, but... This is Mr. Woods' son, by the way. He's definitely his son's dad.
One, two. You wanna get one?
I think you got one.
Good to go.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
I appreciate it, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, dear, for your fatherment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Or take care of it. Zeebo.
Hello, nope, it's working?
It's on, it's on.
All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody, mayor, council, figureheads, audience. I would here, I'm excited to introduce to you our new police officer. Ms. Summers, come on on. She has recently graduated from the Wayne County Regional Police Academy and decided to make Inkster her home. We're pretty excited to have her. Chief, can you come down, please? Yes, we're gonna take a picture. This is Summers' family, her father, and grandmother, and grandfather.
Nice.
One, two.
She gotta get this picture.
Don't let the baby face fool you. All right, thank you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Okay, everybody, we're gonna roll through this as fast as we can. We have a lot on the agenda. We're gonna start with our Wayne County Commissioner, Glenn Anderson.
Thank you very much, mayor, and good evening, council members. I know you have a busy meeting, so I'll keep my update very short. One of the things I did want to mention, I think it's been posted on several sites, but I have a senior dinner coming up. It's totally free for seniors. I'll let this audience see it, too. And some of you may have seen the flyer already. I only have a handful of them here now, but if you contact my office, we can put you on the list to come to the dinner. We have a really good response already. We expect to have 300 seniors there. And free dinner, free entertainment, dessert, and hopefully some gift bags to leave with, and maybe some raffle prizes. But it should be a really nice evening. It's June 13, and at 5 o'clock, at Burton Manor. So, looking forward to that. The, just wanted to update everyone, the jail proposal. It's a multitude of sections, about 1,000 pages, just over 1,000 pages. We're going through it piece by piece and contract by contract. There's many multiple contracts. The, it says to me that we should be completed with our review of the proposal by mid to late June. It's coming up on us pretty quickly, and we're having a lot of meetings on it. The credit rating for the county has been, has improved. It's now investment grade. And Inkster's portion of the Parks Village allocation is almost $6,000 this year. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, State Representative Jewel Jones. How many jobs you have? I mean, you are Jamaican.
Good evening, mayor, council administration, citizens. Just a few updates. I actually typed some notes at the meeting, but I looked at the agenda, so I'll keep it brief. I was just gonna discuss some of the bigger issues. We're dealing with Medicaid work requirements prevailing wage right now, and some legislation regarding sexual assault. If you are familiar with the MSU case, that's been the biggest thing. But it is budget season right now, so as we get updates, and as we vote on new legislation, we'll be sure to keep everyone in the loop. So that's it for me. If you ever need us, always feel free to call us at 517-373-0849, or send us an email at jeweljones@house.mi.gov. As always, happy Monday.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Somebody said you got some sort of award yesterday. Could you...
Yes. Got you, got you. And before I talk about the award, this Friday as well, May 11, from 6 to 8 p.m., we are having our, we're having a youth summit at Hypathletics out in Dearborn Heights. The address for that is 23302 West Warren Avenue, Dearborn Heights, Michigan 48127. That's from 6 to 8 p.m. It's a youth mixer, just for youth to come out across District 11 and beyond, just to come and network with each other. But yesterday, yes, at Kobo Center, we had the NAACP Fight for Freedom Fund Award. I did have the honor and privilege of receiving the Great Expectations Award. And I also had another, it was a historical moment because I had a holler moment. It was the biggest holler moment I've ever had before. So I was very excited about that. God is good, you know? Doing great things out of Inkster, you all keep up the great work.
Okay. Great Expectations Award just means we expect a whole bunch, that's all. All right, do we, now State Senator, sneak out of here? Okay, great, we'll catch you next time. Before we go forward, I want to introduce the new interim Executive Director of Inkster Housing Commission, Paul Bollinger. Could you please stand? So he is the go-to guy, just started yes, uh, today, he just started today. So, take advantage, get a chance to introduce yourself, and talk to him, and see what his plan is. All right, we're gonna move forward to public hearing. All right. We need a motion, you guys.
To open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
Make the motion to open the public hearing?
Support.
Okay. All right, been properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, passes. This public hearing is for the FY 2018-19 budget appropriations and the water and sewer rates. So this is an opportunity for anybody from the public to come up to the microphone, ask questions, make a comment, sing, dance, whatever you want to do. It's wide open, so come on up. Come on, Red, wait. Come on, come on, you gotta come on to the podium, man. We like, we wanna see you, see what your outfits look like.
Okay, I just wanna ask a question, 'cause I, if I was hearing, right, he said something that we finna go on to a 30-year contract?
Yes.
Okay, so why would that be a, they pushing you to a 30-year? How is that really gonna be? I listened to you talk, but I don't see how it's gonna be an advantage for the city of Inkster.
It's a 30-year agreement. The rates and the variable factors that dictate what the rate is, and it's between the city of Inkster and the Great Lakes Water Authority, which is where we purchase, the regional authority from which we purchase water. The base agreement is for 30 years. The other component where we set, you know, the variable units that essentially dictate the rate, that, those agreements are basically for four years, because we have a re-opener every four years for that. So it's really the, again, the base contract that sets the broad parameters, how we purchase the water and the like.
But it still gives them the right to go up on the, on the...
No, it's, the rates are, the rates are kinda, those are really on four-year cycles. And it's when we, when we set that daily maximum and peak use, those are the things that Jerome talked about. It's those technical variable units that are set, that we're setting now, you know, that we would be setting now under the, under the initial term of the contract. And then every four years, we can revisit those factors to make sure that they're, you know, can be, whether we need to stay with them or adjust them higher or lower.
I didn't hear you say that out of the 43 cities, that it's gonna be a fixed rate across all, all the cities?
No.
No, no, each community. So, so we have the base contract. That's just basically all the legal stuff. And then Inkster has its own Exhibit A or Exhibit B, where we set our specific variables that are specific to Inkster. That's, that's, that's really kind of the, the big thing in terms of the actual rates from which we'll be purchasing the water from the regional authority. It's that component that can be opened up every four years. The larger agreement, basically, I mean, the main thing is that we're just agreeing for the next 30 years to purchase the water from the regional water authority.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Questions, comments, anything? Nothing, nothing else? Okay, come on up. Dino.
Hello, everybody, my name is Dino Van.
Good evening.
Just quick question. If, if we're agreeing to purchase water from them for 30 years, and what leverage do we have to decide on what rates come up every four years?
Well, I mean, the leverage, I think, comes in with the fact that all 43 communities in Wayne County will be purchasing water from them. If we're on the same cycle, we're all up to negotiate rates every four years, we have the leverage of coming together to negotiate those rates. But you're gonna pay based on the size of the community, how much water you use, how far the water has to travel from their center to your city. So Canton has more people than Inkster, so they may have a different rate. Inkster is bigger than River Rouge, so we may have a different rate from them. But we could use that leverage as, we're all up at the same time to renegotiate rates. You know, the bottom line is monopoly. Where else you gonna buy water from?
Right.
I mean, it's usually Detroit water, so it's not like we can just call somebody else. And maybe we can call Nestle and get some water. But, you know, we boycott that, too, so we finish drinking this, you know?
And that's a matter, too, so everyone can understand. When Detroit sold off the water to Great Lakes Authority, we are Great Lakes Authority. That's all 43 communities. So we do have a massive input now where we didn't with Detroit. Detroit was a dictator. Now we are part of the solution and the problem when it comes to the water, because we all have a ownership in it.
That's a good answer. Hey, Tom.
I'm up here representing beautification, and I wanna know, do I have a budget? If you guys put me in for a budget.
We're talking about the water, not the budget.
Yeah, I'm doing whatever I wanna ask on the budget.
Really, you wanna know how much, that's really what you wanna know.
Am I gonna get a budget?
You wanna know how much.
And amount has been included. I can't recall exactly. I'll get you that amount, but I know we, we had talked, the mayor did, you know, approve us including beautification in there.
You have him on the record now, so you're getting something. Come on, Ruthie. Come on, come on, come on.
I saw maybe he had a budget for me, too.
Oh. Okay, we're trying to close in here. Anybody else, any other comments from the public? Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Great. Consent agenda. We had a chance to look at, we had two meetings. Regular city council meeting and our special meeting. Any additions, omissions, deletions? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Boards and commissions, any nominations? Oh, we have a removal on the Cable Commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Due to members who were missing numerous amount of meetings, I can make a motion to permit the, permit the, back off. Remove Leon Hayward and Charmaine...
Kennedy.
Charmaine Kennedy.
Mr. Hayward, today, his letter came back in the mail.
I'm sorry, Leon Houston.
Leon Houston, excuse me. So it was returned mail.
Oh, so he never received them?
No. So that, his notification will have to be some other kinda way.
Is that something we voted? I thought that's automatic in the bylaws, for the removal.
Removing in the charter.
We have to...
Removing the charter, yeah.
It comes back to council.
But it comes back to council, they, I have to get them, provide them notification, and then the council has to vote to remove.
Due process. Okay. All right, so what are we doing?
So the motion is to remove Charmaine Kennedy.
Okay. The motion is to remove Charmaine Kennedy from the Cable Commission?
From the Cable Commission.
We have a second?
Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion? I mean, we're moved because she missed a certain number of meetings.
Correct. She missed more than three consecutive meetings.
Okay, okay. According to the bylaws.
According to the bylaws.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. So we're gonna resend the other guys?
I'm gonna try to do something.
All right. Any other nominations? I guess we didn't, he didn't get noticed, 'cause it came back.
Right, it came back.
We don't want a due process issue. Okay. We're gonna move on to new business.
Consideration and approval of the acceptance of petition signatures to allow consideration of social club, of a social club at 3801 Inkster Road within 300 feet of a residentially zoned land.
That move, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes.
Did you want me to do the budget? You want me to do the budget?
Um, you guys wanna proceed with the budget? What do you want to do, a table?
Table. You still haven't done the numbers?
Yeah, we haven't did the numbers. So, go ahead, read it.
Consideration and approval of the FY 2018-2019 budget appropriations and the water and sewer rates.
All right, do we have a motion to table?
Who moved?
Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It's tabled. We'll vote on that at next meeting, according to state law.
Consideration and approval of authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with McKenna or Pacelli Group to operate the city's building department.
That move, Mr. Chair?
Whoa, 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 you gotta, there's two proposals. So you have to move to go with one contract or the other?
Mr. Chair, all right, move, yeah, we... Make a motion to move with Pacelli.
You motion to go on the contract with Pacelli?
Yes.
Support.
We have, it's been moved and supported, discussion?
What does the administration recommend?
We didn't. Since it was only two, we decided to just submit it to you and let you read and look at the differences in the proposal. There's one, Pacelli's was lower than McKenna's. I think the split was 64.5% that they would receive out of the revenues of the building department. McKenna's was at 70%.
We can't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Pacelli's proposal was the lowest. It's a fee splitting arrangement where they get a split of the fees that come into the building department, and their bid was at 64.5% of the fees go to them, and we get the difference. McKenna's bid was at 70% of the fees go to them, and then we get the difference for having a full-time building official five days a week.
So is this gonna be an ongoing process where you guys are not gonna make a recommendation to us, and we approve it? Or is this gonna be where we gonna, we gonna, we gonna start as a body approving every contract that's come through this office?
Well, you always, what we decided with both these, the rubbish, as well as the building contract, since there's only two bidders, to present you both of them. Especially if the bids are very close, because you may not decide to take the lowest bid. You might say, I like this particular company because of the service, or some other reason. So we wanted to present you with both of them, you know, instead of just giving you one. Now, we have 19. We can present those two, or we can whittle them down to top three, four, or the top one, whatever you want us to do, 'cause we work, you know, the administration's gonna do what you need us to do.
I, well, I disagree with it, so...
We got a motion in the floor right now.
Well, we have, it's a discussion, though.
But if you wanna change the policy...
Oh, no, I'm not gonna change, I don't, I disagree with what's going on, because I'm the policymaker, and I rely on administration to bring me something that they recommend, and then I go through the details. And if I don't like it, it's gonna be year and nay. I ain't getting paid for that, you know what I'm saying? That's not who I am. You know what I'm saying? So...
It was a committee of folks, how many people we have on that, who looked at it? Five people. And there was a pretty good consensus. We had code enforcement there, we had...
And the recommendation should've came like that, as normal. I mean, I just don't feel comfortable, because you guys know more about what's going on. I'm just reading this, but you know what you need and what, I don't. I just go by your recommendation, and if I like it, you know what I'm saying? If it sounds appropriate, then I vote yeah or nay. Okay.
We didn't actually take a vote, but there was a consensus to go with the lowest, lowest bid.
Okay.
We didn't take a vote, though. We just talked around the table. Okay, any other comments on it? You ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Pacelli.
Consideration and approval of authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Franco, a public relations and branding firm, to conduct positive brand development for the city, as well as a full revamp of the city's marketing procedures.
All right, been properly moved, supported, discussion? Do you guys want some other procedure other than what we currently have? Would you like to review the top three, four bidders? You want, like them to come before council?
Mr. Mayor, I think that part of the administration's duty is to ferret out what you consider to be the best for the city. And it's just our responsibility to act upon that. So it was very difficult reading the bids for the two refuse companies. It's a lot of work, and I am not inclined to wanna read every single bid piece that comes in. That's why we got you as mayor and your very capable administration. If it comes to a point where we are in disagreement with how things are working, then we have an opportunity to reverse it.
Okay, anything else, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, um, since I'm the senior councilperson here, and I've been here for quite some time...
You're just senior.
You're going to the senior dinner, aren't you?
In the past, there has been three bids, and those three bids have been presented to council to make a decision, okay? It changed basically somewhat when we went under consent agreement. The council and McKenna's decision, it was made by the state. So now, I guess, we can go back to doing the three bids, and this guy can say, okay, we wanna choose, we wanna see what the, what, how much it is, and what's the scope of service that I do wanna see, or to the council, whether or not they want to give it to the administration and have them do it.
And what's your pleasure? Administration will do whatever you want to do.
They can include it in there if they want to, if you want it, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna... They can include it in there if they want to, if you want it, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and make a decision on something that I'm not permitted to.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't feel comfortable with that.
It's another whether it's two or three, as I see, uh, uh, somebody, it was competing.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, the policy, why don't we just electronically send you all the bids? So when it, when it comes to the council meeting, you had a chance to look at the information, so, and we can still do a recommendation. But if you don't like the recommendation, if you thought one of the other bids were better because you read them all, then you could vote down the recommendation.
I don't have time to read them all. I'm telling you that right now.
But if you don't want to read them, you don't have to. But if you have them, at least you have the information. Because, or we can do the top three, whatever you wanna do.
I mean, you, you can, top three is fine, but, I mean, that's just like, I'm interviewing thirty people. I, I mean, do I have time to sit and, and that's where we pay you guys to.
Alright. Is there consensus, you guys wanna look at the top three?
That's fine.
That's fine, that's okay? Now, I mean...
Makes sense to me. Electronically, right?
Yeah, electronically.
I don't get electronic, because my computer don't work, so...
Okay, then we will make a recommendation out of the three. And you can take the recommendation or reject it, you can, you know, do whatever you want. Okay. Alright, so you ready to vote on this? Are we ready to move forward?
I am.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase two contiguous vacant residential parcels located on the south side of Hopkins Street between Inster Road and Sylvia and are legally described as duly noted in the total amount of five hundred dollars to Nelson Lucas.
Shall we move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration of an offer to purchase one vacant residential parcel like, located on the south side of Princeton Street between Princess and John Daly as legally described as duly noted to Geneva Goldston?
Geneva...
Geneva, excuse me, Geneva Goldston in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Shall we move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval to replace outdated city sirens, install new controllers, encoder, and control points in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. The account is one zero one three three seven nine three three dash zero zero zero.
Shall we move? Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval to replace I select previously used for a benefit exchange to lay, liaison Bright Choices.
Support.
You gotta move something?
Don't move.
Support.
Okay. It's been supported twice and moved.
I moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consideration and approval to accept Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority Summer Employment Program, grant any amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Shall we move? Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consider approving a special event request for a special event, Inster Summer Fest, to be held July seventh and eighth, two thousand and eighteen. The applicant is Inster Summer Fest Committee.
Support.
I mean, I moved. What is wrong?
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor, huh?
I'm on that committee, I, I need to...
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
I moved.
Consideration and approval of an agreement with Wright Energy Partners and a Centium Capital to purchase and finance LED lighting for city-owned and operated buildings.
Well, I moved.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
Yes, um, I'm seeing two different bids here, two different prices, uh, I'm just curious to what that is.
The, the two prices are, um, it's, it's taking the, the, uh, city's buildings broken down into two categories. So the total project is, is a little more than a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, and it's broken down into two, two components. So the, the combined, combination of the two gives us the total overall project. The reason for the breaking down is just to, um, look at financing it over a long, financing the lower amount over, potentially over a, a longer term.
Yeah, 'cause I see one that said a hundred and fourteen thousand and there was another one, I'm like, so which one are we going with? Sixty-eight thousand.
The, the, each, again, each of those, uh, proposals put together covers all the city buildings. The, um...
So that gives us the hundred and eighty seven thousand.
That's how we arrive at the total.
Okay. These cover all the buildings inside lights, correct?
Covers City Hall, um, DPS, uh, the rec center, fire station, and public safety.
Any other questions up here? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Council approval of a water services contract between the City of Inster and the Great Lakes Water Authority.
Shall we move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Council approval of a contract to provide services for the city's trash collection.
Need a motion for one of the two bids.
I move that we accept the bid of DFL.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes.
Item N was removed. Consideration and approval of the transfer of three properties formerly owned by the Inster Public Schools from the Taylor Public Schools to the City of Inster.
Shall we move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion?
Uh, yes, discussion. Who's gonna help cut all of the grass? That's a lot.
Oh, Jerome gonna cut it. Don't even worry about it.
Hey, so we ain't gonna have no complaints then, right?
Oh, yeah, we gonna complain, yeah. But Jerome gonna cut it. And take the complaints.
Oh, wow. Hi. Right.
You wanna get land back? I mean, what you, what you wanna do?
We, we have, we have to hire more people to cut it. Well, we can't, we all know if you don't tell us.
I don't, I, that's only your councilperson that did tell you. I ain't gotta tell you.
Okay. Well, we, we, yes, we will be cutting the grass, but the good news is we, we received the properties back from the city.
That's a good thing.
Alright. Alright, anything else up here? Jerome won't cut it on Saturday.
Get on your ride in the morning.
Over time, we gonna increase your budget. No, I'm talking about we gonna increase your department's budget to keep that cut.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
To vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Beauve.
Shall we move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
To vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, and I'm not for sure what the name should be on. Thank you.
Support, I may, I moved. I need a vacation. I moved.
That's all they read.
I supported it.
I got you.
Reading some of them. It's been properly moved and supported, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Item, you know, P Q R. Item R is the what, what we took in closed session.
Oh, we only had two. We only had two.
We only had two.
We only had...
We had one more.
Oh.
That was another thing.
That was another thing. The early retirement?
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Don't move. Okay.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. And mind, mind your business. You just cut the grass. You just cut the grass.
Not yours. Not yours.
We're not talking about you.
We gonna increase your budget, Jerome.
Okay, public participation. To, Tony Bayton?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes, yes.
Alright, everybody heard, heard that and they see on television too. Alright. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Treasurer, City Clerk, City Attorney, Department Heads, those in the audience and those, uh, viewing. We up here to tell you about, uh, the community cleanup for this month, which will be Saturday, May nineteenth. We meet up at the rec at nine AM. It'll be warm, so those who got scared off from the cold in April, I'd like to see you out this May. Okay, we wanna, um, kinda concentrate on, um, we have different projects going on, but we wanna concentrate on, since we have the Memorial Day Parade coming on, we wanna sorta like have a group come and clean, pick up the litter along Michigan Avenue, along the parade route, so that'll be, uh, cleaned up. Do you have anything? We gonna have the dumpsters out, the four locations, Wheatley Park, Westwood Park, Lamone Park, and up at the rec center.
Ditto now. But, you know, I wanna say this, this is one of the hardest working persons we have in the city of Inx, and she tries so hard.
Right, she keyed in the city.
You know, we just had one, uh, uh, the twenty-ninth of April. And it was cold, a little rain and all that. Yeah, we had, but anyway.
It was alright.
We want more people to show up. We got block clubs, I talk to my block club, you know, everybody got block clubs and all that, you know, help, get involved. And, uh, and, you know, we, you know, we, we, we can do more. We can do more. And I'm trying to think, uh... I, yeah, I miss y'all, I ain't seen y'all in a couple of months and all that. Yeah, but what is it? Oh, yeah, you know, we, we gonna chair the southeastern, you know, uh, uh, beautification this, uh, September, you know. We want the city, I know, you know, of course, Tony been talking to you about it. And that's one of the main events, you got people of different communities coming to southeastern area and all of that, and they come and we gonna, uh, you know, discuss our attributes, you know, and our wonderful things that we have. And, uh, and we gonna try to get some, uh, historical, you know, information about in this region and all that and have a nice presentation. It's gonna, gonna be at the golf, uh, golf course.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, do you ever consider moving your dumpsters to other places?
Uh, I haven't considered that, but I just said the four locations, you know...
Well, I know, but I'm saying that you have them the same place every year and that does not, um, have our residents excited about having a dumpster in their neighborhood. It's always the same place. I live close to the rec, but I'm gonna transport all that stuff to the rec? So if you, if either you, is it possible that you can ask a company for some donations of more dumpsters or do something to put more dumpsters in other neighborhoods?
Okay, okay. Your district, okay, when I ask information from the, the district to say what area that you need cleaned up, um, I really haven't had much response. So if there's certain areas that you guys need cleaned up or to have a dumpster, you know, just mention it. I just said those four locations are the best, you know, for the city right now. But if there's other areas that you like to see dumpsters, you know, let me know.
Vacant area like Lincoln School grounds, they using that for dumpsters. I went past, they're going, they're going out there like six couches, seven, eight, uh, mattresses. I mean, the areas that's open.
Different ones.
And ain't too many people living in that area at all, once they using up the dumping ground.
Yeah, different ones are finding areas where they can just dump.
Well, you know, ear- earlier, we had a beautification meeting, uh, side, side that we was talking, I was talking about on Pine Street, you know, along there by the, uh, that, uh, project area. It's a lot. And, you know, I was thinking maybe we can get a, with Mr. Billings' help, we may could get a dumpster put there, our beautification, uh, right there on Pine Street. There's a whole lot of stuff up and down there and they need...
By Parkside, in the old garden.
In order really to clean it up nicely with a dumpster there, we can clean it up better. We probably can concentrate a group there, a group of individuals who work that area.
We had one on Pine last year. We had one on Pine last year. By Old Woodson School.
Where, where you used to, Woodson?
Yeah, we had one last year.
The old duckers.
Yeah, but it's all back. That's Ando's.
Yeah, that's Ando's.
We did do one on Pine.
It is Pine.
It was one on Pine.
That used to be the back area, I think, where Old Woodson School is.
And...
Yeah, we can, we can take the dumpster from the rec center and put it over there.
Uh, I mean...
Okay, first of all, let me say this.
How did we get here?
Okay. First of all, everybody trying to put a dumpster here, put a dumpster there, but we had trailers running up and down the street, picking up any trash that you had, uh, uh, boxes, uh, mattresses and everything, okay? Alright, and even, it was cold Saturday, but yet still, I'm gonna get hot out there. You know, we got a trailer sitting over there and the, and the Inster Police, uh, crack that we can hook up to something and we just throw stuff in there just... Cause you got so much, what I wanna say, you got so much junk over this whole, uh, city of Inster, you know, you just can't put a dumpster here, a dumpster there in that garden. We fill up every dumpster that they bring in here.
We know.
They get filled up. People run, some people go over there, if, uh, over there, Penn Park is full, they had to go to Recreation Complex over there and, um, the guy had to bring another dumpster over there at, uh...
Yeah, I asked for two. Two for those two areas.
And another suggestion, you know...
So, I just wanna say, while y'all talking about get these dumpsters here, don't forget, Tony need a budget.
You know, many years ago...
A good budget.
Or saying, I think was the first...
Are y'all filibustering?
We were...
I mean, have we just lost control of the three-minute? Can I put out a celebrity?
We work for you guys.
We gonna get paid, you know. But you remember years ago, whoever took the stuff to the city and had to wrap in the big dumpsters and all that? I, you can't do that anymore. It's a liability. Okay, you know, because of that ramp.
Y'all need, y'all need to have a meeting with Mr. Billings. Y'all can talk to him all day long. Yeah. So they might pick up the couches if they set them out on the curb.
That's right.
We don't want no counters out there.
Bring their couches and whatever, you know, to the dumpsters as well. Let's not forget, we got them companies to go out and pick them up.
First of all. Alright, thank you. Dino Van Junior.
Dino.
Dino, wake up.
Uh, once again, hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. My name, Dino Van, uh, I represent a lot of things. I mean, I'm a resident husband, father, uh, executive director of a few programs, but today I'm, I'm really here on behalf of Cup, Community Up, um, project. And we've been doing a lot in the community, um, even as far as like the beautification, uh, our org was out at Penn Park filling up those dumpsters, um, and highly influencing the communities to actually come out and be, uh, participate in the cleanups as well. But, um, I'm here, I wanna talk about, um, the Juneteenth, uh, Freedom Celebration. So, Community Up, we wanna somehow, uh, provide awareness to our youth, um, as far as just Juneteenth, as far as why we wanna celebrate it, why we need to celebrate it. And just, uh, put more emphasis on celebrating and honoring our own. And we brought, uh, awareness just through educating the inner community. By inner community, you gotta forgive me, but I mean like the hood, you know what I mean? I mean, like, you know, you know, uh, you know, just bringing awareness of those things to, to, you know, the forgotten. And, uh, just for those who don't know, you know, it was the order that freed the last of the slaves, um, kinda like Independence Day, but it's actually our Independence Day. So we wanna celebrate that. but it's actually our Independence Day, so we wanna celebrate that. So we, um, developed a lot of, uh, you know, flyers, a lot of momentum via social media, just via word of mouth, and we found out, like, the people don't know nothing about it, so by us presenting it to them or bringing it to them, it's like this new thing, it's like, wow, nobody never told us about it, you know? Um, so now the people, you know, we getting a lot of feedback, and we wanna celebrate it. So we have brought it to the, uh, Inxton Task Force. Uh, we wanted to do it at Colonial Park. Colonial Park is a Wayne County Park, um, so it wasn't really working, um, as far as we going through the Wayne County, and we were told that it was risky because of the weather, um, floods a lot, um, which sent us back to the table, to the drawing board. So, we wanna do it on Inxton property. We wanna do it on Inxton land, um, and we actually have, um, three sites, um, that we've been looking at. Uh, one is the old Inxton High Grounds. Um, I think that would be a, a, a good, um, I mean, just in memorial of what happened. I mean, just as far as the citizens, you know, a lot of, you know, the community is heartbroken about it, uh, me, myself. But, uh, we can take it and make it positive, you know? We can start doing things, um, on that property, um, just to put some type of, uh, positive reinforcement on us actually tearing down our own big high school, you know, uh, public high school. Um, the second one is, I'm not sure if it's Inxton property, but, uh, the old, you know, where we do the carnival, right there off the Malcolm X, lot, the old Malcolm X Center. We used to do a carnival over there, right there on Middle Belt, Carlisle.
Oh, okay, that's Inxton Housing property.
That's Inxton Housing.
Paul Bolinger, that's him in the front row. You want his property, you have to see him, this way.
All right, all right, um, so really, really, I guess I wanna know, can.
Your, your three minutes is up. That's my dual line.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm asking my question. Well, my question is, can we, will we be able to do it, um, on Inxton High property? Or is it some type of?
If you, I mean, no, we own it, so I mean, if, if we've done events on there before. It's just, A, if that's what you wanna do, B, you gotta fill out the special events form. And have you talked to Middle Manor Park or Block Club? Cause they did one last year. I don't know if you guys would like to do it with them instead of having two events? I don't know if they plan to do it again. Jootine?
Yeah.
You gonna do it again this year, you planning to do it again?
Uh, we gonna do something, I don't know, it's gonna be on the Juneteenth, you know. But we gonna do something, actually, to get this community together, you know, get more involvement.
They did it in the neighborhood last year.
Yeah, it would be nice to have it.
But you can do it wherever you want to.
We're gonna do more like a festival, more like a festival style, um.
Who does the special events stuff, Shadet?
All right, um, thanks for your time.
Dino, you talk to Mr. Henderson. Shadet, you do special events or the clerk?
Who does it?
You can see the clerk as far as any land we own.
Okay.
Mr. Bolinger for the Inxton Housing, and talk to Mr. Henderson if y'all wanna do it together.
Okay, when will I, or how?
She's there every day.
I won't be here tomorrow though.
Okay, all right, Wednesday.
You have, you have her number, right?
I do.
It's on the calendar, yeah.
All right.
All right, no problem. Okay, Willie Johnson. Somebody help Mr. Johnson out.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I just stopped by here. Of course, I had a couple of things that hit me. I figured I should refresh the mayor and council on a couple of things. But first, I stick with the police department. When you hire the new chief, one thing I told the mayor and council, are you gonna give him the equipment that he need to, to punish law and order to the city? You're not gonna get a whole lot of development in here until you prove to people on outside that you can protect them. Every city need their own police department that they control. Now, we got a strong mayor here. He's running everything. You laugh at me, but the joke is on you. The mayor's got everybody in his hand like that. All he gotta do is squeeze them, and they start falling out one after another. Now, you wrote the charter, changed the charter? You should've had the city clerk to be elected, not under the what, mayor's young, under the mayor's arms. He tell the clerk what to do, and they control the city. I'm telling, now, I ain't scared how probably be going on. I know I'm gonna stay here as a hundred. I think I'll stick around a little while longer. Now, I thought I heard something about you selling some property here in Inxton. You can go way out in the country, and somebody won't sell you fifty feet of land. They'll cha, they'll charge you more than Inxton sells a whole lot for you. It don't worth nothing. There's development all around. You sitting up in here, if you come in here to laugh, you laugh too much. This is no laughing matter. We got a new president. I was telling you, I told you about the storms, I told you about the lights out, getting candles and things like that. Somebody laughed. I bet somebody was in the dark and didn't know how to find yourself around your own house. I'm telling you something else. Plant your plant in your yard. One tomato plant, or pepper plant, or something cucumber, because you're gonna be, might be hungry this summer before the summer's over. This is strange weather. This is something strange going along, going around in this universe. Watch my words. I'm older than anybody, I'm twenty years older than anybody in here.
Ma, Ms.
That's right.
Mr. Johnson?
I wouldn't be wearing that World War II cap if I wasn't up there. Hi, sir. Uh, uh, one thing here, I want to mention, you sleep about the railroad. The Durbin and Wayne, all the rest of them, making plans. Inxton's ideal to have a rail stop here in Inxton for the train. I bet this was someone forgot about it, you know? Inxton got some very, very valuable land because it's too close to the airport.
What train are you talking about, Mr. Johnson?
Pardon?
What train are you referring to?
Railroad, railroad line.
I mean.
That's the New York Central. It's the only thing going to Chicago through here.
Amtrak, you mean?
Amtrak.
Oh, they have one in Dearborn.
You all know what I'm talking about. They only have one railroad track come through Inxton. I'm not alert with dotting the Ts and, or dotting the Is and crossing the Ts, but too many of it thinking about now, now, now. I'm gonna tell you about Trump. Trump thinking about twenty years from now.
Mr. Johnson, your, your three minutes, did you say Stone Day? Mr. Henderson, you talking about?
You have a gamble.
The interest rate going up.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I get out the way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
But remember one thing, the mayor got this city in his hands. He control everything. They do what he say or get out. Be, be careful how you get a real, you're probably, you need experience. Good experience. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your kindness. I might've stepped on your toes a little bit.
You fine, Mr. Johnson.
When you sit back and see people giggle too much, laugh too much, how many tell you how you can get some more money in this city? How you can bring in more taxes? They wanna have parties, jump up and down and everything, laugh, but no one can tell you how to bring some money in from Lansing up on the United States Treasury.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
God bless you.
All right.
I bless you.
Yvette Brock.
Boy, I got a list for you, Mr. Mayor, you got that kinda power.
I didn't know.
Good evening, Council. I ain't gonna start calling y'all figures. But, the party is. Okay, I'm gonna get my compulsion. Um, I'm, I'm up here on behalf of New Step, um, CDC, just to remind everybody that our food program is next Friday from eleven to one at two seven six two eight Avondale. We will be handing out food boxes, so if anybody's in need, or you know somebody in need, um, they are free to come there, they just need to have their ID. I'm making that announcement today because I understand that, uh, Mother's Pantry had some problems with their roof on last Friday. So we wanna just make sure that everybody that is in need of food is aware of other pantries within the city. We will do emergency boxes if you need it, and you just need to call three one three, seven eight nine five one nine nine, and we will get you an emergency box. Thank you.
Thank you. Akendele.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, before I begin, and this'll be real quick, I wanna thank Mayor Pro Tem Williams for showing up at the Grill Lounge last week. Um, we had a good time, excellent dialogue about the city of Inxton, its future. On a positive, on a positive note, also want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell on a job well done. Uh, I'm still talking about the presentation you gave in our DDA meeting, um, on your findings, and hopefully we can take that to the next step before we present it in front of councils. I just wanted to give a, um, a special thanks. But for this, for this body and for our residents, I wanna introduce Ms. Lillian. She didn't wanna come up, she's standing right there. She's a resident of Inxton. Her family and, her family and friends own a restaurant called KG's. Now, you're gonna like this, Mayor Pro Tem. KG's is an, is an African fusion restaurant. It's on the Garden City side, on Inxton and Cherry Hill. But what they wanna do is, they want to have a heavy presence in the city of Inxton in terms of participation, seeing what they can do, teach African food. I know Ms. Lillian is looking, um, looking for, looking for places where she can teach French, um, to children, and so they wanna get really involved in the community at large. I know they wanna do the Inxton Summer Fest roof, so that's, um, we can connect with her afterwards. But they, but KG's is the first, um, um, African type fusion, Senegalese, American restaurant right here in this area. And they are ready to rock and roll. Um, for more information after our meeting, we can talk more about it. But I just wanted to let the community know that they're on the move, they wanna get involved in the city of Inxton, and we just wanna welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Octavia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents.
Good evening.
Um, I'm coming to you on behalf tonight of Western Wayne Family Health Center just to share a few of the Awareness Days for the month of May. As some of us may know, that this week, particularly if you know a nurse, just thank them for their service because this is National Nurses Week. Um, also for the month of May, it's Mental Health Awareness Week, um, month. Uh, for those of us, or those of us who know people who are suffering from mental health, um, we do have services at Western Wayne Family Health Center to take care of those persons, so you don't have to travel far. We do have that, you know, right here in our city. Also, the week of May, the fourteenth through the eighteenth, it's National Women's Health Week, uh, where we celebrate women. Uh, Men's Health Week, they always ask, and I say that, is in June. So we don't forget about the men, but May is for the ladies. And just remember that on Mondays, we have yoga free of charge at Western Wayne Family Health Center from six PM to seven PM. On Wednesdays, we have Zumba and indoor, a three mile indoor walk, and again, that's free of charge. We also hold a diabetes support group every third Monday of the month from five thirty to seven PM at Western Wayne Family Health Center for those who are in need. So we just wanted to come and share some of our announcements, and thank you.
Can Steve Chisholm wear his spandex shorts to yoga?
Oh, God.
For the record, I do not own spandex shorts.
Officer Levo.
Speaking of spandex shorts. When are we going bike riding again?
You can help yourself, couldn't you?
Okay, but in all seriousness, I really, I do look forward to the startup of the Pedal Push.
Most definitely.
That time last year. Okay, so on to my announcements. On Wednesday, this Wednesday, at six thirty PM, we are having Coffee with the Cop at Applewood Coney Island at two eight, two eight six four zero Michigan Avenue. Uh, we're just gonna sit down, have a conversation. Previous conversations have included the, uh, drop in crime rate in Inxton, uh, what kinda resources available to Inxton, how residents can get the word out there to the media about all the good things happening in Inxton. Just a conversation, so we hope some residents can come out. This month's going to be at six thirty, so next month will be at ten AM. We're gonna alternate, so that way we can reach people who will work during the day and people who work during the night. Um, next on the agenda, we have the Bake Sale on May twenty-third, ten AM to two PM, or until supplies last, they sell out fast, in the police department lobby, and all of that will go towards the first movie night. That is going to be probably the first week in June. Just have to solidify a few things, um, looking forward to it, and thank you all for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alisa Smith, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Thank you, thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Again, my name is Alisa Smith, this is Garish Floyd Springer, and we are here, um, representing Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Inxton Alumni Chapter, and we are here to announce that we're gonna be ha, hosting an expungement fair on May nineteenth at the, um, International Academy, uh, School on Avondale. And it's gonna, um, be hosted, it's gonna take place between ten AM and two PM. And it's open to, um, any man or woman that is looking to have their criminal background expunged. Um, the expungement would not happen on that same day, but they're gonna learn about the process. We're also gonna have a judge there that's gonna speak on, um, police etiquette as well as court etiquette. So we wanna welcome the, um, the citizens of Inxton, as well as there, anyone that they know that can use this service to come out and join us, please. This is our second one that we did. The first one we did, we did get a very good response, and a lot of people were helped with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hardy J. Robb.
First, I just wanted to say, I came up here actually just, uh, say, about, say, that brother Billings, DPS, on their help during the storm for the city and residents, and the way, you know, they expeditely got out and got, uh, the limbs and everything picked up. And they helped out myself, and they helped out a lot of residents, you know? That was a lot of money. We had to, uh, hire tree trimming companies and, uh, that such to get out. But I appreciated that, and I just wanted to let them know that because if they don't do it, I'm gonna come and complain about it, so. I said, I might as well come and tell them. I appreciate it, they did it. But we seeing that uprising in, um, illegal dumping and all of that's going around in the city. It's good, and we hope that the residents and, uh, the, you know, folks who out here, you know, the stummlords who are dumping stuff out here, you know, here and there in our neighborhoods, or folks who, you know, what they need to do is take more attention to what's happening as we have this two item limit now with our trash pickup, you know, on our, on our bulk pickup. So therefore, when you only have a two item, you know, they say you might have a window, and you may have a chair, or you may have a chair, you may have a table, but you may have a bed and a headboard, but you can't leave the mattress. So therefore, that's where you leave, that's where you're getting folks dumping stuff out. That's probably, because I seen the uprising that myself. But hopefully folks take advantage of that, uh, city wack cleanup on the nineteenth. And also, uh, I wanted to say to the Inxton Police, for the officers showing their presence during the weekend, I was at a friend's birthday party at the Stardust Lounge, and officers came over in there, and they was there, and it was nice and smooth, and it was good to have their presence there, because we had so many problems, uh, dealing with state police. And I, you know, I don't mind them being there, helping to protect the service, but it's much better having community policing. We got officers like Officer Field and Officer DeVeau who come around there. You know these guys, and they know these people here. And as I was talking about with, you know, you have, uh, you know, I had a, we had a situation in my neighborhood over in, by the old, uh, area, and, you know, it was a young man, you know, he had some meltdowns every now and then, but when you have state police coming in, and they don't know these people, they don't know this guy dealing with mental issues, they coming right in going all crazy, and then you got somebody hurt, somebody in jail or whatnot, you know, who really just need to go to Heritage Hospital to have a little cooldown period. So with having Officer Field in there the other day, who knew this young man, they was able to diffuse the problem that was happening with the state police. Cause, you know, like I say, I appreciate them, but I don't appreciate being, you know, police jail. I just don't appreciate it. But spare love though, anyway. God bless him. And, uh, also, I wanna look, what we gonna do with, uh, Parks and Rec for our baseball this summer, you know? Summer is a time when, you know, in Inxton, we had I-PAC, Inxton Parents and Children Together, where I was a coach on that, you know, many years ago, and, you know, uh, I don't know where the fund went for that, or what's the plan is for that, but. And, you know, uh, I don't know where the fund went for that or what's the plan is for that, but, you know, during the summer, I know the baby going off, but during the summertime, during the summer, you have children, you know, when you, that time, that period from nine to thirteen, that's when it's most impressive age. In the summertime, without things to do, you don't have kids, it's gonna be, while we at work, like I say, while you at work, they gonna be in your window. You know, item mine is a Douglasberg shot. So, you know, we need to find a way to get this, uh, summer baseball going back. We already got the little summer programs going in the different areas and whatnot. But summer baseball for our young men and our young boys is a major thing that we need back in our community, city of Inkster. God bless y'all.
Girls too. Don't forget the girls.
Oh, the girls, hey.
I play softball, thank you very much. And on that note, sir, if you are interested in starting a baseball team, if you want to coach one, he's not listening. All right. I'll get him afterwards. Okay. So, um, sorry, I apologize. I forgot something. I wanted to announce that we're gonna have National Night Out on August seventh. It is probably going to be at the rec center and we are seeking, uh, community organizations that would like to set up an informational booth. Um, whether it be just, we're not selling items there, but if you want to get your word out there about your organization, I know we have Western Wayne on board, we have Starfish on board. Anything you want to do. If you don't want to run a booth, you can sponsor a booth, such as like face painting or arts and crafts, something of that nature. It's just gonna be a big night out in the, at the rec center. It's gonna be a good time. We're gonna have music, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have vendors. It's just gonna be a lot of fun. More details to follow, but I would like some organizations to start reaching out. Contact me at three one three four hundred five three eight seven, or you know, just catch me on the street.
Five one eight seven.
August seventh.
Five one eight seven, your number.
That's what numbers.
Three one three four hundred five three eight seven.
Also, he raised his hand to coach.
Okay. So, but in all honesty, yes, if you, if you could find someone, so we have the Inkster Police Athletic League, which is a, um, sport, youth sports activities league. We're looking to start baseball teams and softball teams. So thank you very much. So if you know people interested, please send them my way. I'll get you the card. Um, and National Night Out is for the time, five o'clock, five PM.
Five to nine, isn't it?
Yes, five to nine.
Aaron Sims. You've been working, man.
Yeah, we've been over, uh, on Williams, we cut that field and, uh, all the fields over there real quick. Um, just real quick, uh, tomorrow, nine AM, uh, at four three three six Williams Street, which is the Malcolm X House. Uh, Chief, real quick, uh, got with somebody from the office. They called me, uh, about tomorrow. Um, just got a phone call. Robesha, Robesha High School is sending forty-five kids over to, uh, beautify the lot, the other lot and the house on the outside. So, uh, gotta say thank you to Republic Services for donating the dumpster. Um, but Chief, if we could, probably, you could probably squeeze it into your schedule to have someone escort the kids. Cause they're gonna walk from Robesha over to Williams Street. Is it, if it's possible? Cause they don't have no, no other transportation to get there.
Really?
So they're gonna walk. I don't know, I don't know all the logistics. This is just what I was told. This is what I was told. From, uh, from nine AM, they'll be there from nine AM to one PM. Uh, I wanna say probably about eight thirty. I, I, Chief, I don't, all I'm, I'm just letting you know what I was told in the email.
No Sue Carnell's number? Have they seated them? So she was at, she was at the high school.
No, shoot the back. I'm just asking, just asking. I'm just asking.
He shouldn't be done yet. She should be done.
So tomorrow at nine AM, if, uh, if it fits inside your schedule, uh, the kids will be at the house, uh, doing what we call project cleanup of that whole area. So if citizens, council, mayor, anybody have free time, um, to just swing by and just engage with the kids, um, that would truly be a blessing, um, and everything. So we already got pizza, uh, waters and everything. Uh, we got supplies coming from, uh, so basically this is gonna be a day of just, uh, getting that area together. Uh, second off, uh, May nineteenth, we're doing a, a demo of the house and gotta give a shout out to Republic Services once again for donating the dumpster. Um, I need to know from council, mayor, uh, building the code, everybody, do we need to pull anything, um, for May nineteenth to go in there to demo the house before the contractors come over to appraise?
There's Kurt from our building department in the back row. You can talk to him.
All right, Mr. Kurt, I'll be there to holler at you. Um, well, the last thing on, on my schedule and Chief, and Chief, don't shoot me, I'm just a messenger. But put the word out on the street, July twenty-first, uh, Public Safety Day. Um, got the word out to the kids in the neighborhood. They told me to tell y'all, be prepared for the kickball game because they coming with their game face. They said if y'all need to ask Mayor, Council to be on y'all team or what have you, they said bring them. So don't shoot the messenger.
They talking about the stuff, right?
So July twenty-first, we're gonna publish a public safety day and, uh, once again, Mayor, Council, we need to know if we need to pull any kind of permits to, uh, have it at the Woodson School over there on Metal Building Park. Um, we'll have a food truck. We want to put food trucks, uh, vendor resources. Uh, DTE's coming out. They're gonna do a, a little thing about the do's and don'ts about, uh, electricity and gas. So it's just gonna be like a whole public safety day. Anybody got any resources, uh, you could contact me and then I can forward everything to the, the president and the secretary of the organization. Um, if you want to be a part of the public safety day, if you want to bring some type of resource, uh, to set up a, a booth and what have you not. Um, I think that's about it from, uh, from us. And I just thank you guys for your time. And Ms. Wiley, you saying something to me?
You have a number?
Oh, my phone number, seven three four six three six three seven zero nine. Seven three four six three six three seven zero nine. And, uh, if I need to stay afterwards to get that information, I'll stay, um, about pulling.
You playing with the kids? You playing with, with the public safety?
I can't play. They got me on simple, they got me on strong restrictions. So I pushed the limit today doing what I did today. Uh, so I'll stay and that way I can get the information from you guys. So if we need to cut checks or what have you not, uh, pull permits or whatever we need to do, we gonna go ahead and get it out the way, uh, before July twenty-first.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk.
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer.
No comments.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Um, just a couple of things. If anybody out there is aware of the Inkster All Alumni Picnic when it's being held, uh, one of the residents asked today and I had no idea. So if anybody is aware of the Inkster High School.
Oh, Inkster High School, okay.
Yeah. Um, it was la, she said it's usually in June, but she don't know. Well, if anyone knows, they could, uh, let me know. Also, in June, uh, NAN and the RISE program, uh, you know, the school to prison pipeline and all that, they will be holding their third annual, uh, track camp. The first session, they're having two sessions and the first one is at Robesha and it's June eighteenth through the twenty-second and it's from ten AM to three. The second is at Romulus High School and it's from June twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, ten to three also. Um, these track camps that they put on, they, um, send kids to college from the money that they make. They sent two last year and they hope to send more. They're looking for donations because they need to raise about five hundred dollars per track camp. So if you're interested in volunteering or helping in some fashion, you should let them, uh, let Crystal know. I got her number, but I'd have to find it. Um, this, uh, third thing is that, um, the Memorial Day picnic. I mean, not the Memorial Day parade. That, uh, you need to get your ads into the book by the end of this week because we're going to be going to print our souvenir booklet. So I need that information. Also, uh, anyone still planning on participating in the parade but has not turned in their participants' information, you need to get that to me. Because if it gets to me after the, uh, book has been printed, you can be in the parade. You just won't be in the book. That's it. And, uh, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Oden.
Sir, thank you, Mayor. Uh, number one, District Two Advisory Committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, June the fifteenth. I hope everybody is listening to the meeting tonight, lives in that District Two, come out and be a part of what we're trying to do, continue to improve and in the city of Inkster, the area, all over the city. Come out and join us, have some input, help to clean up the area and thank you.
May or June?
June, next, next week.
Okay. No, you said June.
You said June.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, at Direct Complex, starting at six o'clock. Thank you. Um, again, I, I spoke on this a while back, water hydrant over on Lexington, I'm sorry, not Lexington, Glenwood, between Eastern and Harrison continues to leak.
Who's been over there?
Been there for. It's been, it's been there for a while. It's one of them old hydrants, but we, we're constantly losing water. It's draining down the street, so forth. Um, our roads, what, what is happening? Is, is the county doing anything? Who handles the roads for the city of Inkster? I'm talking about the main roads that, I'm talking about the county road.
County roads, county.
When, when we gonna get them out here to start dealing with?
They have a hotline. You can call. They'll pass the holes.
That's what I'm talking about.
But you gotta call them. They'll come out. They come out pretty quickly too.
Well, no, not, not, not me. I can't call them.
Yes, you can. Any citizen can call the hotline.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the whole city.
You say you want to fix those, sir?
We, the whole city need, I mean, if you listen to the citizens, you'll find out what I'm talking about. The, oh, also, I'm going back to, to Glenwood at Harrison, on the, Harrison and Glenwood, north, going north. They're putting and replacing sidewalks. Whether we're getting permits, any permits being issued for them or not, I don't know. But they, they've done it in a couple of locations over there. I want to commend the Inkster Task Force for a job well done this past Saturday. They did a great job, a wonderful turnout, wonderful turnout. And the thing that I like about it is the city is starting to do those types of things where it's bringing the people out, people are getting involved. Next upcoming event, we know it's gonna be the, uh, Fun Fest. This coming July. So I say that because it's getting the people out, people are getting to know each other, they getting out to socialize. People starting to know who's who, so forth and so on. And they're taking part in what's going on within the city. So, uh, I wanted to mention that. Uh, we got another problem, the community dealing with the youth and started dealing with the basketballs again and putting them, they putting them in the streets. Everywhere you go, you starting to see them. And my concern is somebody's gonna get hit by a car. The kids out there playing and they, they sort of, you know, they, they take their time getting out your way, so forth. So we need to, you know, stay on top of that. And, uh, you know, keep, keep the city going in the right direction and watch out for the citizens and the kids, the youth, et cetera. That's all that I have.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell.
I move.
Are you second?
I have nothing to say.
Councilwoman Howard.
Uh, yes, um, I'm having a first district advisory, uh, advisory meeting for District Four and it's gonna be May fourteenth at five o'clock in the Tiffa Room.
I just saw it.
Yes. Oh, shoot. If, if the room was available. So I forgot to call you earlier to ask you. Okay. All right. And that's it.
I just have two things. Um, I attended the NAACP event this Saturday and I did see one of the candidates for governor. I believe about two were in the building, but I was only able to bump into one. As I do see these candidates.
Excuse me? What'd I say, yesterday?
So I saw Shree Thanakar and I actually, him and his executive director, whoever that was, I talked to him and invited him to come to Inkster. Cause we normally don't get to see candidates for governor except for TV or a poster board. So I did tell them that we do have citizens here to count and I would like for him to come out here. They did give me his card. So if we don't hear anything, um, within a week, I'll give him a ring. And as I see other persons in my capacity, I try to express that same word. And then the biking, because you all keep talking about spandex. Tonight or the first thing in the morning, I will be sending out an email to the persons who are on the email list and those who would wish to join, please make, get known to myself so I can add you. I want to poll everyone for good dates, cause we all work different schedules and what's good for me might not necessarily be good for the majority. But I would like to get a consensus vote on a, a particular date and time that we could all go out and that we'd be out there in a heavier presence and scene. And just for the record, I don't think there's any photos. I mean, all these photos that I'm featuring, I have not seen one with any spandex on. So if you do have one, please forward it to me so I can see the proof. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
First, I want to thank Springfield Baptist Church and Pastor Harris for coming out saying in prayer. I'd like to thank all the pastors that's been coming out all through the years who've come and blessed the city and wished us well and hope that we can keep moving forward in that way. Um, also, uh, over the weekend, was during weekday, I went to Detroit tour and had a group meeting with some people out there. And the, the owner of Grashit Lounge would like to open up one I hear as well.
The Grille.
It says Grashit Music Lounge.
It's Grille Lounge.
Oh, cause the table said Music Lounge. Okay. Okay. So like I said, he let them start a business out here as well. I also met the owner who owns the plaza out there and they want to come out and look at some business out, the business out here as well. So I'm glad I was invited to that, that conversation and we're planning on having more conversations as well. So, um, hopefully that more const people will come out as well and get some more ideas from what I got. Um, one other thing, Lamont Garden, I just want, I need to ask, they have these plastic trash barrels out there. And it's, I think it's three of them out there, but they're not the regulation barrels that, uh, Chuck and me will come and get. Who dumps those trash cans?
I, I did last year. Uh, they had a, they put one of those, a cleanup day, we had, they were full and then when they get full, people just put the trash on the ground. So they had one over in Pine Park and so we, we had to, trying to pick up a full dumpster with all type, I mean, you saw all types of stuff.
What happens is, you know, the guys, they put one of the, the cans on the court while they're playing ball, cause when they drinking water, they dumped it there. But eventually that can get fills up. So who goes back and into those cans, you know? And it's, it's a part of parking. And send that they're, you know, round barrel cans, you know, uh, plastic cans, uh, can we look at the trash company have a reel?
When Jerome over there cutting the grass, he can just go ahead and get, get the trash can.
Well, what, what I'm saying is that, that can needs to be empty every week. The cans need to be empty every week. Or, or they can change the cans or they'll put a dumpster there. And they might have some dollar parts though. I mean, actually, you take a look at that.
Last but not least, shopping store.
All right, we're gonna get out of here. Just real quick, on Friday, a group of volunteers are gonna go over to Daly Elementary and teach financial literacy to the kids over there. It's gonna be all day event from nine to two thirty. So it should be fun. If you don't hear from us, uh, by three or four on Friday, you know where we would last. If you don't hear from us by 3:00 or 4:00 on Friday, you know where we would last. So I'm looking for us, we might be in the basement.
Myself, the man in county, so.
Yep. So it should be fun. Thanks to everybody hanging in there, it's a long meeting, we'll see you in two weeks.
Looking for adjournments.
Ain't nobody here to pull it out.
Nah.
So I'm gonna have to ride around.